Bye.
First. All right, Thursday. Good evening, this is the regular council meeting of Spring Hill City. Thursday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. And call to order. And the first. Piece of business is the invocation. And those who would wish to participate.
Dear Lord, we come to you now as a governing body. Help us to remember those who are in need and to be considerate of. Of everybody in the community. And not to have any pre. Presumptions or pre-made ideas about things, help us to come open-minded, help us to think of the people in the community. Give us wisdom and just help us to. Try to provide balanced and well-thought-out decisions, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the.
Ledge of legions. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Kirk, can you call the rule?
Mr. Leighton.
Here.
Mr. Owen.
Here.
Mr. Graves.
Here.
Mr. Eckert.
Here.
Mrs. Roth. Mr. President, we do have a quorum present.
All right, thank you. Next point of business is approval of the agenda, do I have a motion, or do we have any? deletions or additions? Moved will approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, we have a motion on a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. And now it brings us to citizens' participation. Those who are for the. Citizens that would wish to comment on items, not on the agenda, Mr. Peterman.
Last meeting I brought up about the hole that was third time needed fixed on. Two hundred terrace and Barker. And the guys came out in two days. Went the extra mile to find out why they had, this was the third time they was working on it. And found the problem and it looks great.
Oh, good.
So it's good to see that. We've got someone doing, doing the good work now. So, and the other thing I got to add to that is. On Webster Street, one of the things that one of a lot of the people said was the problem was is because it was a unipore. It has the street and the curbs and gutters together. Hopefully, we're going to cut the gutters away from the street before we fix the street, just something to throw out there, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Next up is Andy Bone. I probably butchered your name, pardon.
Good evening, Council President Owen, council members, my name is Andy Bowden and I serve as Johnson County Community College's president. And I just wanted to greet you tonight on behalf of the college. I joined the college almost a year ago on July first, when President Sobchak retired. And I thought it's time now that things are settling down, I ought to come out and introduce myself. And then if it's okay to give you a quick update on your community college.
Sure.
So first of all, I'd like to say thank you for your leadership and for your ongoing support of the community college. And to all the taxpayers of Johnson County, this is your college and I appreciate the support that you provide the college. My goal tonight is just to say hello and then also to give you a quick update on the college. And I think the best way to do that is to talk specifically about Spring Hill and the residents of Spring Hill that we serve. While each year we may serve as many as forty-five thousand students across the college, across the region. Specifically for Spring Hill, each year we serve about three hundred and fifty students. That are taking some form of associate degree or certificate program. Of those, a hundred of those students will be high school students who are taking college credit through us at the high school. And each year we have about thirty-five graduates specifically from Spring Hill. In addition to that, we offer non-credit or continuing education instruction. And each year we'll have another hundred and ten residents who will take advantage of those programs and earn thirty or so certifications. This year, this past year that we're just wrapping up now, we were about twenty percent face-to-face and about eighty percent of our courses were delivered. Virtually, some form of online. And, and of course, that was all about keeping the students, keeping our faculty, staff and community safe. But I'm happy to say that as of June first, we have reopened the Nerman Museum and now the Midwest Trust Center. You have known us as the Carlson Center in previous years, that those are both open to the public and full lineup of performances set for the year ahead. As we ramp up for the fall semester and responding to the interest of our students. We will be more than fifty percent face-to-face. And again, again, that's about responding to the needs of our students. But at the same time, we know that there are still students that want to take courses online and so we'll continue to offer online courses. Tuition continues to be ninety-four dollars per credit hour as compared to a hundred and twelve for somebody else in Kansas who doesn't live in Johnson County. Now making us the most affordable college option in the state. For those who perhaps thought college was out of reach, recently, the governor signed the Kansas College Promise Scholarship. Which is a last-dollar scholarship to support students in five high-demand, high-wage, high-value fields. IT and security, physical and mental health care, advanced manufacturing and the building trades, early childhood education and development, and education and training. It's a last-dollar scholarship, so students, you have to be, if you're within a year of graduation from high school, you're eligible. If you are an adult, twenty-one and older, who's lived in Kansas for at least three years, you're eligible. There are some family household income requirements. You need to be a hundred thousand or below to be eligible, larger families. Hundred, better part of a hundred and fifty and below. It's all about getting folks skills they need to get them back to work or to. To move ahead in their career, so. I know it's been a challenging year for all of us and I appreciate your support, just wanted to introduce myself, say thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Did have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
What happened with enrollment during the pandemic, did you see a change in enrollment, go down, more online, obviously?
Yeah, certainly more online, just by the way we're delivering courses than we've experienced in the past. We saw a decline this past year of about eight percent overall. Other community colleges around the country, even around the state, experienced higher drops in enrollment. I think everybody in the community college space a year ago was thinking, well, when fall came, fall twenty. We'd expect to see a growth of enrollment of students that, you know, I really don't want to go to the four-year school, pay four-year tuition and still be online. That didn't materialize, students that wanted to go to the four-year schools still went to the four-year schools. And so, yeah, we've seen a decline in this last year. Our plan has for us to be up one percent in the coming year. We got to make that happen, a lot of hard work happening to try and make that happen, so, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I would just sit there and say like the College Now program or what it used to be, I don't know what they actually call it now.
College Now still.
Is it still?
Yeah.
I actually benefited from that in high school back in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety and then both of my. Two of my three kids, if not all three, also, you know, benefited from that and they actually benefited, that helped them in college too.
Super.
It's a great program, so.
Thank you, happy to serve.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Are there any programs or areas of expertise within the community college that could assist a city like. Spring Hill, let's say with internships related to planning or. Community economic development or, I don't know if you have an economic development center of any kind or small business center?
Absolutely, so, okay if I respond?
Sure.
So yes, we do run the Small Business Development Center out of our campus for this region of the state. In addition, our workforce development programs are all geared towards supporting. Communities as you're attracting and retaining and growing business. You know, specific program, academic program to economic development, you know, I'd say in our business programs and so forth. There may certainly be opportunities to explore and I'd be happy to help y'all do that, so.
Good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Floor remains open if anybody else has any comments. Then we'll close that and we're at the consent agenda.
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. And that will bring us to the first of our formal action. And that will be consideration of the appropriations order. Twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one zero six twenty-four.
Moved to approve appropriation order twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero. Next one is resolution to authorize public sale of general obligation bonds. And that is Mrs. Armstrong.
Thank you. The item that I have before you is a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately one million seven hundred thousand dollars. Of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-one B of the city of Spring Hill. This is for the permanent financing for infrastructure improvements in connection with the Dayton Creek Phase Three Special Benefit District. In December of twenty eighteen, the city council accepted a petition for the creation of Dayton Creek Special Benefit District Three. This includes the areas included in Platts Four and Five of Dayton Creek. General Obligation Temporary Notes, series twenty twenty-one A, were sold on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. This was for the purpose of temporarily financing the cost of certain internal improvements of the city. The temporary notes come due and payable on March first, twenty twenty-two, but can be paid off early at any time. The resolution to be considered will authorize the public sale of general obligation bonds to provide permanent financing for special benefit district improvements. Following sale and issuance of the bonds, the assessments will be placed on the twenty twenty-one tax roll. The resolution was prepared by Cootac Rock, the city's bond council, and has been presented to the city's legal council. The proposed sale includes the following issue, series twenty twenty-one B, approximately one million seven hundred thousand dollars. In general obligation bonds for the Dayton Creek Special, Dayton Creek Three Special Benefit District. And with that, Ben Hart of Baker Tilly and Tyler Ellsworth, our bond counsel from Cootac Rock. Are here and are available to answer any questions.
Are we still sitting around the one point seven million on the principal? Is there anything that could potentially change that?
Of course, there's always something that could change that.
I get that.
Yeah, right now, the one point seven we've got baked into this is probably just a little bit high. Here recently, the interest rates as far as the general obligation bonds have gone down a little bit and you guys have a great credit rating, so we don't see that changing. If anything, we'll come in under that, is what our, our assumption is, we're what, a month out from bond sale, so it ought to look pretty good.
Okay, how many bidders do you think we'll get on this, you think right now, you've seen in the market?
You know, we, this will be bank-qualified, which opens it up to local banks. And on those cases, we'll have, we've had up to nine or ten bids on a long-term bond, and this is a long-term bond, temporary notes usually one or two. This ought to have a pretty good show.
Okay, great.
I do have one question for you, not really tied to this, but temporary notes, who generally does those as far as finance companies bank?
So what we, what we'll do whenever is more or less construction financing, obviously, so we'll go through the same process for temporary notes. We'll bid them out on a open market auction. And the same bidders that'll bid on the long-term bonds typically bid on these temporary notes. So what they're doing is filling up portfolio with something a lot shorter. You can't get it, I mean, the treasury, treasury rates are a lot lower, so if they can get a temporary note for a year. That's maybe double the interest rate and from your position, it's maybe point seven five the interest rate, from the bank's position, that's twice what they could have got on the treasury.
Okay, all right.
Any more questions? I have a motion.
Moved to approve, resolution twenty twenty-one dash R dash zero nine.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. And that brings us to item number nine, Mr. Miller. Okay.
Okay.
They put your name on it, but I'll take whoever.
All right, I want to see if I can follow Anton's directions and get this all looked up right. I just wanted to do a little. Program overview, you guys probably know all this stuff already, have seen it. That work? All right, that, I just wanted to do an overview of the project, I'm going to ask Pat a couple to help me a little bit and then I'll ask Dan on a couple of these issues. What I wanted to do was go through and kind of explain, that's the basic thoughts on it, replace all or. All or portions of the failed concrete panels, we'll get to that in a second, replace the failed sidewalk and curb. Mill and fill the longitudinal cracks, mill the entire roadway. From two feet off, now I know the comment was made about the unipore, but I don't think we looked at that because. The whole key to street maintenance is keep the water out, so if we cut that away, we've added another crack for water to get in, so. Since we didn't, I don't think Dan went down that road for that reason.
Well, I mean, we evaluated it, didn't go down that road, it was evaluated that way, I think that. Mr. Miller, he could probably address the technical reasons why for us when, when he gets to it, but it was discussed and it was one of the things that I asked about, so.
Place a new surface course and that's that U-bass which has been discussed and then the thermoplastic pavement markings. And remove and replace the sidewalks, like I said, you guys probably have seen all this, final surface will be U-bass. Yeah, it's a. Alter thin five eights surface that helps the pavement last longer again, back to the basic keep the water out, keep the water out. And I've researched it, talking to people, it's been used in Nebraska and Kansas, but I talked to about. Ten different entities or people with companies from KDOT to Coffeyville to. Lenexa's been using it, Edgerton's using it, I talked to those people and I talked to Johnson County. Foreman for this area, so. All right, sorry about this, I was first, one of these that I've done in a while. These are just some of the samples of the cracks that we're looking at, that's the thin one that runs up and down there. And that will be sealed, but not necessarily dug out. The curbs that are going to be changed out will be ADA, vertical and horizontal bars will be used on it, bonding agents are going to be used for the concrete. The full width patches are going to be removed and replaced same day. And dowels to tie in the rods will be in epoxy. Again, some of the samples, this is one of the wider cracks, what they're talking about on this is to, to go back. Full panel on these large ones or on the three-inch cracks, eighteen inches, mill down. Three inches. And then it'll be have a bond, bonding agent. Here's some, a sample of the reason why we're where we're at, this is a, the three different repairs that were tried, hot mix, I can't remember the name of that other. Product, I've never heard of it, but that was used. Again, you've seen all this, but this is just the challenge of the job, I just wanted to go through it real quick for those who are not. Okay, this one, the curb there is an example of where those turtles or whatever you want to call, the ADA will be put on those curbs, on the corners. On each one of them and that's all through the plans for every intersection. Again, just another view of that. This is a photograph from Edgerton, this is U-bass after three years, this was done in twenty eighteen. Again, I look for damage returning, for any sort of. Unusual wear because I was not familiar with U-bass till I started investigating, but I did not find anything up and down these roads that showed. Now, this was the one thing that I saw and that there was a little bleed-through on the process. I think Dan can address what he's got planned to make sure that doesn't happen on this because. Again, the exact construction sequencing and schedule will be provided by the contractor. The. Traffic will be going down Madison for short sections of time and it's going to be relatively quick. I think he can address what kind of timeframes that they're looking at. The numbers that we looked at and he will get into that a little bit deeper and so will Pat helpfully here in a minute, but Superior Bowen was the low bidder. The engineer's estimate, so it's about thirty thousand under the engineer's estimate. Cars maximum reimbursement, which is three hundred and sixty-three, and capital improvement funds, we'll cover that and Pat is going to cover that. That's the last slide, I just.
Thank you. Good evening. The, this is a project that the city will pay cash for. We do have the funds, we have excise tax that will be used in this and then there in Dayton Creek number two, benefit district, there was funds left over. I believe it was two. Yes, thank you, there was funds left over, remember the developer wanted them and, and well, we ended up. Applying those to debt reimbursement, but we still have the funds that can be used on a like project. So there's about a hundred and seventy-four thousand that will be added to excise tax, the city's portion looks like right now. Three sixty-two, three sixty-three, so. Any questions?
No, I like that idea, I know, we talked about it.
I think, I think it's a good idea that we start paying cash for some things, get some projects.
Especially can, I think the one seventy-four helps to reduce the amount of excise tax, so we have it for other projects that we may need.
Yes, and, and we have some additional excise tax that came in this week due to the subdivision that was approved today, tonight, so.
Have you got a timeline from start to finish?
Well, since this was delayed in the last meeting, I know that I'll let Mr. Miller talk, but I do know that it pushed us back just a little bit. Dan, do you have a schedule?
I, I don't because we haven't awarded it, but the contractual deadline is November one.
Okay, so November one would be contractual deadline.
A gentleman has a question back there, Mr. Stedler?
Yes, sir. When it was evaluated, they, they decided on the amount or the length of it and also, it also on the matching cars funds. It's almost exactly even of what we have to pay. As you can see, it came in a little bit lower than the engineer's estimate.
I think to answer the question maybe more specifically, but you could correct me is, we had done already improvements for a lot of Webster from about two hundred and seventh with the lane widening and other things up to the turn.
Right.
Onto hundred and ninety-nine.
Yeah, and some crack sealing.
Some up in there. This was really to be a cars project where they were splitting the cost between two hundred and seventh down to South Street, which is.
Two fifteen, right, which is counting.
And that was the intent and why it was there, if we went south, one reason why we, if we were to go south of two fifteenth, one, the condition of the pavement is not in the condition of what north of there is. And second of all, to the point, is also the fact that we wouldn't get a fifty percent match. So. That, those are two driving things about it, we've talked about possibly.
Well, the third also, if you remember, we are starting to look at that from south to two twenty-third on the alignment.
And that would be a separate project.
That's correct.
But then that would be a little bit more complicated because it's not just one pavement type, we have the concrete pavement and then the asphalt through there.
That's correct.
We did discuss about the two hundred and fifteenth south to about Sycamore Street, which is where that concrete pavement plus or minus ends around that area.
Yeah, concrete, yes.
Is possibly, depending on how satisfied with what we're seeing on the U-bass, about possibly in that segment, doing that as a separate project in off, you know, upcoming years, but.
Right, and that's, we're trying to look at reasonable projects with cash also. And that, that condition is not that bad in that area, as of yet.
Comparatively.
Comparative to this, yes.
I mean, it's not to that point, it was built later, probably about five to ten years, I can't remember.
I don't remember.
So we haven't seen the level of deterioration yet, one of the reasons why I'm having, you know, I asked staff to present a lot of this is, is I sat down with them, I don't know if it was Thursday or Friday of last week and basically said. You know, interim.
You'll own.
Yes, I think. Yes, I think.
We might as well just go on outside.
We'll own it. First have to own it. You have to own it.
And the truth.
Mr. Miller, you have to, you know, show them why they should be in on this and agree to it and be sold on it.
Because the truth of the matter is, I was not sold on it at the very beginning. I felt like that for the funds that we could do something different. Um, I believe, you know, looking at the others, I think it'll work fine. I think we'll, more like a seven year. I know we're projecting seven to twelve, but just so the council knows.
I think what we would be looking at is, is trying to make it so that if we were looking for finance down the road to do a complete rehab rehabilitation. Sorry, I'm tired.
No.
So, um, either a complete rehabilitation or replacement, we would be looking at trying to get that finance. However, we would do that.
Right.
It's cash or funding through borrowing, um, or however it is around that seven year outlook.
Yes.
Somewhere in there.
And plan for it.
What, twenty twenty-eight, so.
Thank you. Do you need, Mr. Miller, to explain the system?
I don't know if there's any questions.
I, I have, I do have a question. As far, in the event we would need to do a patch, can you explain a little bit how U-Bass is patched? In the unforeseen event that something goes south?
I told you that was coming.
I know, I, I just don't have the answer.
I knew that question. I drilled him on that. I, I think I held him hostage in a meeting almost for two hours.
Two and a half.
Was it two and a half? Yeah. Sorry.
So, uh, typically, you know, I give kind of a rundown of the agenda review sheet, but I did want to make a couple of comments. He had asked some questions and some of the public had asked a couple of things that I can quickly address. The, uh, yeah, the extent of the project was determined by a number of features. Uh, the main thing was that the, 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 uh, concrete south of South Street just doesn't have the distresses that we have north of there. It's, it's not a perfect piece of pavement, and it is twenty-eight years or so, maybe twenty-four years old. It was poured later, for whatever reason, uh, you know, it doesn't have the nasty longitudinal cracks in it. It doesn't seem to have a lot of the panel problems with it, so it's just a better piece of pavement. It doesn't really require maintenance, uh, heavy maintenance at this time. So that's, that drove the section of Webster that we're working on right now. Um, the, um, it would be the method of repairing a, a, a street like Webster after it's had a, a U-Bass treatment on it, um, would really highly depend on what, what happens if, if the patches pop out. For example, you know, if you start having problems with some of the patches, um, we'd have to go back in and probably do a, 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 a mill of the U-Bass around it. You know, re-concrete those patches. And then you can, you can U-Bass, uh, just come back in and do it again, you know, in that area, in a small area. If it was a small enough area, uh, y- you might actually mill down a little deeper and put a traditional hot mix asphalt in, in that section. But, um, I'm, one of the major advantages to what we're doing here, uh, proposing to do on Webster with this maintenance operation, is to, uh, preserve, uh, first is to provide what I think is the best, um, cost to benefit ratio of any maintenance we could do out there to achieve what the city's trying to achieve. Uh, the second thing is to also preserve the concrete pavement out there for future maintenance operations. So we have options in the future. Um, you, you know, you could go out there, for example, and do a tour, and, and we evaluated and have costs for a, a two or even a three inch concrete mill. The, you know, pretty deep mill and putting in a conventional hot mix asphalt. Um, that we can, that only leaves you with four or five inches of concrete back. Your, your, your dowel baskets everywhere are sitting right that are on the transverse joints, end up being, uh, right below the surface. And so, uh, you know, and then you're stuck with that. Um, if you just ma- uh, do a, a surface treatment with a half inch mill, you preserve the ability to keep doing that in the future or to do something more intrusive later on if you decide. So, um, you know, that's one of the big reasons, uh, that we've considered what we're doing here. Um, in terms of a schedule, I, I don't have one yet because we do need to award the project for me to have a pre-construction conference and a detailed schedule from the contractor. They have told me, um, you know, that they really want to get the U-Bass down in, in September, October latest. So, you know, they'll be, they'll be working pretty quickly. I'm, I'm working with them in another community and, and they're moving right along. So, um, they, they won't be, uh, uh, because of the environmental conditions, it likes going down in warmer weather, like virtually everything we do on streets. They don't, you get farther into the fall, you tend to have more challenges with temperatures. Uh, so, um, we do anticipate it getting done, uh, completed at least the surface treatment well before the contractual deadline. We kind of put that November out there in case they needed to do a little more concrete work or, or do some restoration work, uh, as well. Um, the, we did evaluate the curbs as Councilmember Leighton mentioned. Uh, I, I do tend to prefer on concrete paving to pour the curb separately. They didn't do that here on Webster. It's a monolithic curb pour. It's nothing inherently wrong with that. KDOT does that all the time still. It's, they leave it at the option of the contractor, which way they want to do it. Some contractors like to pour the curb first and then just run the, the pavement second. Some contractors have the equipment. You've got to kind of have some special equipment to pour that curb at the same time as the pavement. So sometimes it just depends on what the contractor's familiar with. The, uh, uh, as was mentioned, we, we evaluated, should we, uh, uh, cut the curbs loose from the pavement? We don't feel like, uh, that that's a great idea because of the, the desire to minimize, um, uh, opportunities for water to penetrate into the pavement. In addition, the, the cracking that's occurred, if there was a problem with the panels and the curb being tied onto it that caused this cracking, I'm not sure that's the case. But if there was, it's already cracked, so you're not going to get any more cracking now that it's all, um, had shrinkage crack or whatever, uh, plastic cracks, whatever caused this. As I say, this nasty looking crack all the way down Webster. So that's done with and, and it's there. We've got to deal with it. And I don't think we have anything to benefit from, uh, cutting the curbs loose. We will generally, um, macro texture and, and place a surface treatment about two feet off the curb. So it ends up looking like an asphalt street with a two-foot curb and gutter. Will be a little wider into the intersections because they do have a seam there where they've done some separate curb pours around the corners. They, it looks like they did their intersection returns separately. They didn't, because of course you can't run the machine around the corners and do those. So, uh, we'll, we'll be a little wider through some of this by the ramps. But generally speaking, it'll end up looking like it's got separate curbs, even though it really won't. Um, and I don't U-Bass into the flow line of the curb because we don't want that interface between the, the surface treatment and the curb to be where the water is running. So you want the water, the turtle drainage, snowmelt, and all those types of things. You want them running down that concrete curb, which generally speaking is in pretty fair condition. Um, with that, I'd be happy to inter- issue, uh, entertain any other questions. You know, I'm really here formally to consider approval of the contract bid for the Cars Webster Street project with Superior Bowen LLC in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, we did have a, a number of bidders, uh, I believe we had through four bidders. Um, low bid was Superior Bowen. The engineer's estimate, as was noted, was slightly above that at about seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Contract's been reviewed by the city attorney and, uh, the recommendation is in accordance with the purchasing policy. Johnson County Cars will pay up to three hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven fifty, which is roughly fifty percent of the construction. Uh, and then the remaining costs, uh, the city administrator talked about. Um, I do recommend that the governing body accept the bid received from Superior Bowen. And, uh, if approved, then staff will complete the construction documents to bring back to you at the next council. With that, if you have more questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are questions? Move to approve, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Nope.
Motion.
I heard some. Okay. Move to accept or approve the construction bid for twenty twenty-one Cars Webster Street U-Bass with Superior Bowen LLC in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
The next one is discussion item, and it will be Mr. Burton and Mrs. Armstrong. Who do we get first?
Once again, thank you. Okay, this item that we'll be discussing is the city's capital improvement program. In general, the capital improvement program is a formal method of establishing priorities and scheduling capital improvements in line with the funding sources available for those projects. So with respect to what we want to do tonight, I want to review the CIP process. And we'll talk about the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six CIP program. And then talk about project prioritization and then just have a general discussion on the plan. As far as the city's CIP process, um, the plan is developed by council. And then it goes before the city's planning commission to ensure that it's in compliance with the ci- with the comprehensive plan. Then it's brought back to the council and the council would actually accept the plan formally. One question, Pat, what is the timing as far as when it needs to go to our planning commission?
So depending on, uh, the outcome of tonight, it will go to the next planning commission regular scheduled meeting. There is not a meeting in July, so it would be August unless we have a special meeting in there. Because we are starting to work on the comp plan as well.
Okay, just in general, what's happened as far as the development of this specific plan is items are submitted by departments. We pick up items off of the Cars' five-year plan and citizens may request items. These are more or less just listed on the plan. If they happen to be infrastructure, design, construction, and maintenance, they're included in the plan in the appropriate year. So with that then being said, some judgment and decisions by the council are made as far as what is going to be a part of our capital improvement program. So I have, um, proposed a draft plan. We've submitted it to all the council members. And they've had an opportunity to review. One of the things that I do want to point out, I did discuss the plan with, um, many of the council members. But in summary, there's a high interest in roads and road maintenance. With that being said, the item for discussion is, should we actually include maintenance on our CIP? The other item that I'm hearing is there's a high interest in not taking on any more debt than necessary. So when there are projects and plans that it's decided by the council that we want to pursue and debt is a good obligation or a viable alternative, they want to do that. But then in general, as far as the road projects, there's a consensus that they would like the city to not finance those whenever possible. Okay, I, I would like to just give a summary of the twenty twenty-one projects and the twenty twenty-two projects. Twenty twenty-one is not typically on the CIP. This is a CIP for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six. But we had several new projects come on in twenty twenty-one. So we did want to give the council an opportunity to see what are those projects and what status that they're in. And then we'll look at twenty twenty-two. But in summary, for twenty twenty-one, there's a total projects of two million, three hundred and two thousand dollars, nine hundred and five, two million, three hundred and two, nine oh five. Seventy percent of those are street projects, thirty-three percent are wastewater, and eight percent are generally other projects. In the projects for twenty twenty-one, a hundred percent of those are from city's cash reserves is the recommended source. Not that council will choose to go that way in the long run, but that's what we are recommending. The exception may be with the Lagoon rehabilitation project. And depending upon how that project plays out, that may be something that the city would choose to bond. But the process for that will be, um, the design is going to be developed. That will be brought back to council and then they'll make recommendations to move forward. And the design is taking place this year. There has been a task order out for that. So that is something that you'll see and hear about more toward the end of this year.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-two projects total just over four million dollars. Forty-five percent of those are street projects, twenty-six percent are wastewater, two percent water, twenty-one percent parks, and six percent other. The percents that I'm including in here is the total project price. The city's obligation is somewhat less than that because of outside funding. But I'll also say in the twenty twenty-two project, um, we have the Inspiration Park. Inspiration Park is a community-driven project. And that project really would not come to be unless the outside sources that are working on that project come back to the city and say that they're ready to move ahead. That may be something that moves on down the road to a future year. Um, the, another project that's in twenty twenty-two is the Spillway Lake and Dam. And Mr. Miller left, and I was hoping that he might speak on that. Do you want to talk a minute about what's that, or do you want to do that toward the end? Okay.
It's, it's a project the council's looked at for several years, um, where there's a small leak in it and then the rehabilitation of the overflow.
Let's be clear, though, it's not that the dam has a leak in.
No, 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 it, it's right. It's, it's the overflow area which, which is leaking. I'm sorry.
In the dam run of your life.
No.
That's not what we're saying. It's an overflow.
Is it something that we need to repair? Are we getting more damage from the leak that we need to do something with this?
No, it's, it's a project that we really need to look at, uh, in a reasonable fashion instead of just saying, here we go, fix it.
Okay.
Something.
Perfect.
And I'll review a few of these in here and just.
Okay.
Sorry, Pat. I'll move it. I, I believe that that project in twenty twenty-two is for design and construction both. So the process would be, they would look at it from a design standpoint, and then that would come back. And you would have an opportunity to suggest to move forward. Um, the other thing, I, I'm not going to go into any specific projects from twenty twenty-three and beyond. If, if there's something that you want to discuss on those, you can. But with respect to the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two with the emphasis on cash, those projects are primarily targeted for our excise tax when they're road construction projects and from the highway fund if they're a maintenance type project. One item that we did put in this plan is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year beginning in twenty twenty-two for road maintenance. So there is some discussion about, does that maintenance actually belong on the CIP? I've heard discussion both ways, but I think the idea, the takeaway is that, um, there is a consensus of opinion that we do want to begin emphasizing maintenance and we need to work it into our annual budget. Whether or not it's on the CIP can be determined, but we do need to work on that in our O and M budget and try and find a place for it.
Yeah, I think it's time that we do that. I think the CIP is too easy to lose it and kind of get hidden where if we have it in the budget every year, it's, it's money there. It's money that Jackie has. He knows he can use it and we can get things done. I think the, uh, CIP just seems to me it's for capital improvements. Repairs and maintenance don't seem to be capital improvements to me. They should be.
It seems like they're larger projects when you.
Yes, yes, definitely. The larger projects are capital improvement, but repair and maintenance, I think, is, is something that we need to do every year. So we just need to find the money. And we've, it appears we have a decent source right now for a couple of years that we can use. And that gives us at least five hundred thousand for roads right now for the next two years. And we can add to that or start looking for other sources if we need to.
Thank you.
I mean, here's my comment on it and where we're at. The reason why I got put in there is, is that there was no line item in there.
Mm-hmm.
And in, at least I was pushing for at least to have something captured on it so that we could see something about it because there was no line item for it. So rather than not have that line item, get it at least visible to everybody in the CIP to see that at least there's some visibility for it by the governing body. Um, but I've always been a proponent of the O and M. The problem is, is that when we start talking about that line item and then there's not a revenue designated. A revenue, revenue source that's just completely set aside for it, let me put it that way. Um, there, there wasn't a lot of support by the councils in the past because then that looked at, what do we do on the mill? Because that could have a mill impact.
Could.
So that's one of the reasons why it got put into here also then. But then that's when you start taking it out of the excise tax funds. So when we get into the budget discussions down the road, I had some ideas that I was talking with Mrs. Armstrong about a couple of the things that we've come into to try to establish ourselves for an O and M for a line item and different funding mechanisms for that. So when we get to that, I'll let her kind of discuss all the ideas I've thrown out there.
Thank you. The last item that I'd like to put out for discussion is the project prioritization. And currently, and this may not be the way it was done in the past, but the way that we've done it this year is each department had brought projects that they would be interested in pursuing. And that got added to the plan. My comment or my question is, should we be going through a more formal project prioritization? For example, should council review the projects before they're put on to determine what are the, what's the priority and the goals? Where do we, where do we want to go? Where should we be going? So I will just lay that out there and if anyone has any comments or if they would like to suggest coming back in a different manner, that's.
I think that prioritization is is very important. And the departments that are going to be doing these projects or bringing them forward, they should be here to be able to answer the questions for this governing body. And then it helps us to determine the needs such as the dam repair. Is it something we have to do now or can we schedule it for a different year? So I think it'd be important important for us to have that information so that we can make some common sense decisions on where these things need to fall in our CIP.
We have a question from Rudolpho.
Well, as a member of the of the planning commission, if we're going to be reviewing the CIP and presenting it to the council, that the department heads should also look at the strategic plan to see what their requesting really is in line with the strategic plan. Much like you should look at the strategic plan.
So.
If 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 the planning commission has to see if the CIP coincides with the strategic plan, shouldn't everybody be doing it?
Answer.
Go ahead.
Yes. So there there's really a couple of different functions. The the planning commission needs to make sure that it is in the emphasis or follows the comp plan. The and then in looking at this, I agree with Luanne, then we should do project prioritization. What we're looking at now is to actually have a project list. And then that wouldn't clog up the CIP. Right now, the CIP looks clogged. I mean, you know, we're not going to spend $10 million in the next two years. It's unreasonable or it's not recommended about that. So what we'd like to do and what we're gearing towards is a project list. And then everyone would get to look at the project list and we all go through it and take a look at our funding sources, what we can pay for, what's reasonable without, and you know, I know the council does an excellent job of not raising the taxes. And right now, some of these projects that are in the outward years, we will be getting additional funding with the projects that are online and getting ready to start. Quick trip's a great example. We really don't know how much quick trip's going to affect us. If if they do what they think they're going to do on that, I mean, that's a great revenue source for us. So I want to kind of apologize for the CIP this year, the way it is. And it will be cleaned up, really cleaned up and will prioritize it. Both the planning commission and the council will have plenty of time to review it. And it will be in line with what we can really afford budgetarily wise. So do you have anything on any of the comment or any of the projects I'd be more happy to go with?
Well, I've been harping on prioritization for years.
I understand, sir.
And trying to get to some type of an index, a combined index, not just looking at the pavement index, but looking at the other factors that come into play.
Right.
So when you get into that, I have a lot of documents that I have provided previously that you can use to kind of look at. The other thing, when we look at these projects here, I think we have to kind of decide what is maintenance versus rehabilitation? In how I view this is if it's you're taking the roadway back to a higher quality or a level of service, that's a rehabilitation program or project. And then this is what, you know, I was discussing with both of you, not at the same time. This is that we need to develop a streets program that the projects are inside of.
Yes.
And.
So to give you an idea, on the 250,000, that would be getting the streets prepared to do chip and seal or a melon overlay or something of that sort. Is that correct, Jackie?
Yes.
Yes. So it it wouldn't be, so any rehabilitation like Webster, that would be a project and we would look at that in the CIP. Just like you said.
But that's how I look at it. It's not just.
I agree.
You know, or are we just doing repairs on it? It's a fact of are we taking it back to a higher level? What I would call level of service is what we, a lot of times an engineer would refer to it as. Are we taking it to a higher level of service?
Sure.
And that's how I would view that right there. So it's not based off of dollar amounts necessarily. It's about what are you achieving with the money that you're spending?
Correct.
That's how I view it.
But if if you really, I mean, honestly, looking at the CIPs over the year, over the past years, I mean, there was no way. So I mean, dollars do play into it obviously, but it's more to just, we put it all on paper and it's it's not reasonable. That's all there is to it and we'll get it cleaned up.
But I think also what was happening is is that we didn't want to lose perspective of all these things that we wanted to have done. So then what happened was it became this long project list that we didn't want to lose track of it.
I understand.
So when you get into the CIP with that, it's what can we actually reasonably do? And then also track and provide information to the public with the limited funds that we have.
That's correct.
We can't do these, they're on our radar. It's just that from a funding standpoint, if it's important to you, they can come to us and then start saying, do we want to spend the extra money on it, whether it's bonded, mill levy, however.
Benefit district, whatever.
Raise it up, but at least make sure that under people understand that it's not like, it's just kind of like off the radar.
Right. And so in the projects listing that we'd like to get with all the index and all is we would also say, are we, maybe we want to canvas one of the streets down here where three or four people want curb and gutter, you know, rebuilt, blah, blah. And we could canvas that and see if they're interested in a benefit district. Maybe, you know, team with CDBG on handicap ramps for it and any type of savings. So I mean, look at every project, make it have its own merit and look at it and see. And obviously, at the end of the day, the governing body is the decision maker on it and and will tell us. But we're we'll try and use this more as a guideline of what we can actually accomplish and have a project list for the projects that we know that we'd like to achieve. And you know, with different businesses coming on and things like that, we might be able to pull those and flop them on here.
And I know looking at this, there are funding places where we have a number of excise taxes being requested.
Yes.
I want to make sure we don't, that we have good insight into how much we're spending on each project so that we don't overspend. As we have other.
Right, so.
Things we have to pay from that money.
That's correct. So we will, we're trying to very, or get away from in the budgetary cycles of relying on excise tax to be a revenue source for any type of payment. So we're working, Luanne's working very hard on it, but excise tax, you know, we never know.
Yeah.
So once the money gets in there and we know that we have a project to use, then we can circle it and say, 200,000 is not going to hear anymore, even though it's still there, this is going to be. It's it's a, I mean, staff's really working hard on it in conjunction with the budget.
The important thing which was all heard from our constituents is transparency. So the more we're able to discuss this.
Yes.
Out in the open, it it's a good thing.
And I appreciate everything that you guys do as well to help us.
And Mrs. Armstrong, or Ms. Armstrong, I apologize if I said that incorrect. But you and I had discussions about the whole budget and all of this. And I probably took up way more of your time than we should have, but.
I don't think that you took up more than, you were not the top time.
I think that was actually me.
Oh.
I was here most of the day.
But we went through and 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 talked about some of these things, about what we're talking about.
Exactly.
And putting them into the reality. And I was trying to think about with what you were saying and I had a train of thought with that.
Oh, sorry.
But I think what, when we get into the budget talks is that's when we really need to get into that. Oh, and it's, that's what it was, is we had the discussion when there was a budget surplus back in 2017 and I pulled, we pulled that document out and it was recommended to establish, it wasn't required. And but it was recommended to establish a public works fund, if I remember. I don't know if it was exactly phrased that way, but that was in 2017.
I think it was street maintenance fund.
A street maintenance. I can't remember the exact word.
That's correct.
But it wasn't required, it was recommended. And I think at the time, people were elected on the governing body of of saying that it had to be that way because if you put it in established that way, now there were some limitations on how we would use the excise tax. And if we set it over there and then we have to look at transfers. So I think that's one of the reasons why it was recommended but not done. Looking at the governing body that is up here now, I think the timing and the opinions are a little bit different about how we should go about doing that. So I kind of look forward to seeing that. I'm all about infrastructure. That was what my masters was on, on infrastructure master. And I've been pushing for all these things. It's just.
It's time we do it.
Yeah. I mean, deferred maintenance can only go so long. And that's where we're sitting.
Yeah.
And timing wise, for when we might first discuss that is we're looking at the next, oh, discuss separate funds or how funding for all of these projects and where it may come from or developing new funds for them. Is in our budget discussions on July 22nd, we'll be looking at the non-levered funds. And so with that in mind, we'll see the revenue coming in and where it comes from and what we may be able to do to set up a different fund or a different funding source.
I think it would be great to to get that stuff laid out for us so we all know. I think the meetings we've had with you were very informative and and got a lot of discussion just from us to them to to where we feel about things. But going over the CIP with you and spending those hours with you was was very beneficial. I think it's something we need to make sure we do every year.
Well, I enjoyed it as well. So thank you for taking your time and spending your time. I appreciated it. Okay.
Any other question, Matt? Mr. Saban?
With regard to streets or?
No, we have not. What we do have is in 17 or 18, there was a analysis of all the streets. And the best that we're going to be able to do, and and we are going to look at that, is we'll just do a lineal foot roundabout basis and then we'll know. But to answer your question directly, no, not yet.
My second question is, with the laws passed in Washington, why have you not tried to tap into any of the infrastructure?
Go ahead. So the the actual infrastructure project funds have not been distributed. Then, and we do know the amount that the city is going to receive, will receive it in two payments. We have several years to use it. And one of the things, the treasury department has still been changing its criteria on the use of the funds. I would anticipate that if there's not a true infrastructure bill passed through Washington and brought out and signed by the the president, then the treasury will loosen its guidelines on what the existing funding the city will get to be able to use it. Meaning we can probably use more of it or maybe all of it on infrastructure. Yes, we will get, we will receive, do you want me to answer?
Yep, go ahead.
We will receive 1.1 plus million dollars. I don't remember the ending, but it's 1.1 million.
Now, in regard, you were talking about the old city core is what I'm going to call this right here is the city core. You were asking about cost. We're not talking cheap money, we're talking probably in the millions. Right.
Yeah. And there are, there are ways that we can possibly look at also in phasing different things, like stormwater. Take a couple of years and do stormwater and then come back in and and do true curbs and things like that. There's a lot of ditches that we could fill in with pipe, be prepared and then continue on, so.
Mr. Peterman?
I can see a little bit, a little bit of sewers and and curbs and gutters and sidewalks in in this part of town. As you know, where I live and where Steve lives and and I think everybody up here, there's sidewalks where we live. But the city didn't put those sidewalks in. We put those sidewalks in. When we paid for our house, it was included. So it was, it's it's the nice thing that we've got people working for the city now saying, no, you're not going to get by with not putting the sidewalks in, you're going to put sidewalks in. And thank you, Pat, for doing that.
Just my job.
When you look at the old city core and how I envision possibilities with it, because I've I've talked with people there for years about different ideas and concepts. And the dollars are just so high. But what you want to do is provide some walkability in a lot of the areas that you don't have right now. So you have to be what I would call strategic about that. And I think that that's what we need to look at is is having strategic streets that people can tie into for walkability and not do them all. Strategic ones that could give you more access in and out and then look at long term walkability for the other ones that feed into it, other methods that are less costly to provide a good means for access. At the same time, when you start touching the streets in a certain sense, then you have to start talking about ADA requirements. So when you start talking in to getting that street where somebody has to walk in, now we have to talk about ADA, which makes things get way expensive with the curb and gutter, how we have to go back into the ditches. So there's got to be a lot of thought to it. I think what we need to look at and evaluate as a community, I won't be here on council in six months. I'll still be part of the community. I still like to provide input as as if the people want. But I think what we need to do is look at some of the older communities. I grew up in old, in Shawnee, we dealt with the older area when I would call around Johnson Drive North between, I think it was around Flummer, Neiman and App Two. And it doesn't matter, but the point is is they had an area very similar. And what are they doing to address that? I don't think that we're the only community that has that issue because the curb, one of the things to know also about the ditches is that people have gone back and looked at it and said, you know, from a water runoff and a water runoff quality standpoint, it actually improves the quality of the runoff possibly for the community because those ditches actually provide some type of a filtering system, not as good as a best management practice for stormwater BNP. Uh, because those ditches actually provide some type of a filtering system, not as good as a best management practice for stormwater BMPs. But they do provide that in, into a certain degree. So there's a lot there to unpack, Mr. Snavely, to get there. It's, it's not a simple answer. I think benefit districts potentially could be that way. Well, I, I understand. I think that what has to come together, first of all, is what is the plan of what we have for a vision? I don't think we have at that, at that point, at this point. Once we start developing that, that vision of what you're going to do in the, the old core, then you can start talking about finance. But until we know actual dollars and cents about what it's going to cost, you can't talk about anything, because it's just pie in the sky at this point. You have to have a strategic plan, put a cost to it, and then start talking about it. Until then, we're just talking about whatever. It's just a theories, ideas.
Okay, can we get back on track?
So.
No, it was a good discussion, you know, and it's something we need to ask about. Mr. Peterin?
What do I have to say? If, if you're going to try to figure out where to start, I think where the kids walk to school would be a great place to start.
Yeah. Okay.
Final item I'll touch on is the budget calendar. Next meeting, we will have a budget discussion. The goal is to have, um, the conditional budget entered into our budgeting state budgeting spreadsheet and come back to you and tell you what type of a projected mill levy that that will bring us. We'll also talk about, uh, some formal action for revenue neutral rate hearing. July twenty second, we'll talk about all those other funds and the budget for those. Budget discussions will continue through August, and we're proposing that we have a revenue rate hearing and budget hearing on September the ninth. Budget adoption needs to be done before October the first. It can be done on September the ninth. But it does not need to occur on that day.
Okay.
I think that's all I have. And does anyone have any other questions?
Not as of now. I think we'll, we'll probably have more as we go through the CIP and funding. Funding will probably bring us a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to reports and announcements. All I'd like to say is, uh, again, nice working with you, Ms. Armstrong. And for Mr. Burton, it was, it's been nice working with you with things and, uh, and again, welcome, Jackie. I know you got a lot of work to do. We'll try and get you the money so you can do even more. Mr. Leaden?
I just wanted to let staff know I will be on vacation for the first time in a while. Between August twentieth and twenty ninth. So, um, you might put that on there. So just, I know you're looking at budget calendars and such, and I'll have very limited availability or, or whatever you want to call it. Access or whatever. So, um.
Is this a good time for us to do it all?
It's whatever. I'm only one person, so everybody can do what they want. But, uh, I just want staff to know. And then Mr. Burton afterwards, I have, I want to talk with you about one item, um, so.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Burton. I, I know we talked about at one point the pool opening back up as it has historically. Uh, the question to you, and I know I don't expect an answer today, but, uh, are, are we getting enough lifeguards to where that's a possibility? That we can open up more hours? And, uh, and then secondarily, uh, we're, we have this big building, big beautiful building here that's been renovated. And I noticed that a lot of, a lot of geriatric activities are being canceled or just wiped off. Open pools not, not being, or open gyms not being utilized either. So that's another question. So, or perhaps at the next meeting, you can have some, some insights on those?
And I can give you just a little bit right now. Well, we are back up to staffing. And Luanne will be able to talk to you a little bit about it if you wish, but we, we can get something out to you. We would like to, uh, propose that we would open it back up, uh, to its regular hours. We should have all the staffing we need, do we?
They have another group come through, and I'm not sure the date that they'll be trained. But we do have, I believe, twenty-six lifeguards now, and so we're getting up there.
Basically, bottom line, we'll get you a schedule and we'll, we'll look at all that. And we will, uh, work to restore all back prior to COVID. As soon as possible.
Very good, thank you.
There's no reason that we can't on some of it.
That is it, Mr. Burton.
Mr. Grace?
Uh, along the pool lines, I had a citizen reach out, and she's a family of five, and I know Mr. Burton, we had talked about it. Along with Mr. Hinger shot, family of five, using the pool pass system, it's twenty-seven dollars every two trips to the pool. Would really love the idea, and I know it would come to the governing body about bringing back pool passes. Or, um, you know, either extending those passes to go more than just ten visits. I think it's something we look at, cause they had talked about how the surrounding cities were doing pool passes, and so they were going to go there. Um, and I think we would all agree that almost thirty bucks for two visits for a family of five is. The goal of what we have put in place, so, um, Pat, I don't know the quickest way to make that switch.
Sure. So what we can do in, and we looked at it, um, and obviously, uh, the pool pass. If we went for a family pool pass now, we would reduce the amount, uh, cause there's about half of us already gone, believe it or not. So if, if the council, uh, so desires, we would go back to pool passes. And what we would do is we would immediately send you out, uh, what we feel like the reduced rate would be. And it would.
Do you have a consensus?
I totally agree.
That sounds fine to me.
Okay.
It's not a revenue source for it. So it's a loss, it's a loss leader for us every year, so whatever it is.
And the good thing about it is also is that the passes are good all the time. I mean, even next year. I think that we do need to get back to pool passes. We will implement that immediately if the council says.
Yeah, I mean.
And what we'll do is we'll figure out, uh, the, uh, amount reduction that the pool pass should be. And then we'll get the information to you, but if you, if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and implement it.
Yeah.
I think that would be important. Also, opening it back up for like birthday parties, remember they used to have birthday parties or extra hours?
Right.
If we get back to that type of normalcy as well.
And I think, uh, the way I understand it, after this next bunch goes through, then I think we can do that for. But we will make you fully aware here shortly.
Mr. Burton, what kind of timeline, I know we've talked about a little bit, but what kind of timeline do you think we'd be at where we could go back to this?
We'll, we'll do, we'll have it implemented by next week. Yeah, we will.
Okay, thank you. We can't go too much longer.
No, uh.
That we could implement, I would assume, very quickly, hopefully.
So, so we're clear, when you say with one week, you're talking about the passes, not opening the whole pool?
Just the passes, that's correct.
I just wanted to make sure everybody understood.
And then the other thing I just also wanted to thank, Ms. Armstrong, um, I found the meeting very beneficial as well. So thank you for taking that time and setting those up and looking forward to those as well.
I'd actually like to have some discussions when we get to the budget process as well, so.
Do we have a comp to who's going to take up the most time?
No.
Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Burton?
Let's see. I was just going to discuss the pool passes if you wanted. Um, I'll be gone. I don't know. It's like the first through the seven, but I'll have my phone and all, so, so, that's all I really have. Thank you for everything.
Ms. Armstrong?
No report.
Madam clerk?
No report.
Mr.? For you.
No report.
No reports. Okay, we have chief?
I just had a couple of things that we've got to talk about. We're shifting our focus on the streets to more of the repairs, and we're going to be concentrating on repairs, potholes, cracks and such. We had problems at the wastewater plant. They're still trying to get that second clarifier worked. Some of the equipment over time has broken, and the parts have fallen into, to the basins, which are plugging up lines. So we're having a lot of difficulty getting that last one. Frensy Park, the recycled mulch went down yesterday. And we got a donation from, uh, BNSF Railroad for five thousand dollars for the Veterans Park for, uh, park development.
Very good.
I think that's it. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second, doesn't matter. If we argue about it, we're getting out of here. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.